Regular town council meeting to order on April 25th, Mayor Mark Sukup.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Brett Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Councilmember Luke Wagner.
Here.
Um, all right. Uh, any amendments to the agenda? Okay. Um, public comment? Do we have a public comment?
I have two people signed up, but I don't know that they want to speak. Um, John Harris.
And sorry about that. The little face, it's like a little face. There you go.
Working. Can hear me.
We hear you just great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Sukup and members of town council. My name is John Harris and I live at Harmony Club, uh, forty twenty-nine Grand Park here in Timoth. Um, I operate multiple businesses that serve Northern Colorado in the front range that have been positively influenced by the growth that we have seen over the last decade plus. I'm here tonight to state my support for the Ladera development at I-25 and Harmony Road. I believe Ladera is an example of sensible development for Timoth and thus Northern Colorado. We've seen population growth in Northern Colorado, no question, and that growth will likely continue, given our incredible quality of life here. But if the cities and towns that make up Northern Colorado are sensible and proactive, we can not only accommodate this growth, but also make Northern Colorado that much better. We can create places to bring people together and have economic benefit that helps secure Timoth's future. First off, Ladera is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Going back to two thousand thirteen, multiple versions of the comp plan have specifically designated the Ladera property as employment regional commercial. This designation supports centers of intensive economic activity near regional transportation corridors, providing regional commercial services. Ladera and Topgolf are planned in the right location along I-25 near Costco and Walmart. With good vehicle access and one infringe on downtown Timoth. Second, the economic benefits to Timoth I referred to in Northern Colorado more generally are real. Ladera is anticipated to generate six million in impact fees for the town of Timoth, hundred million dollars in sales tax for the town over the first twenty years of the project. And will create hundreds of jobs locally. This revenue puts the town of Timoth in a financial position that will allow them to adapt to growth proactively in areas where more growth makes sense and Ladera makes sense. Third, Ladera makes sense because what is there now are gravel pits and a batch plant. Ladera will certainly be an improvement over the conditions that exist currently. Ladera will create and protect over a hundred acres of open space, including trails, parks, nearly three miles of lake shore. Again, Ladera will bring people together. A batch plant doesn't do that.
Mr. Harris, you got about thirty seconds more.
I know a lot of friends and neighbors in Timoth agree with me that Ladera, including Topgolf, is good for Timoth, and we're excited for the project to become a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, anybody else?
Craig Armstrong.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Craig Armstrong. I live at six, six, one, four, Stone Point Drive here in Timoth. When one travels after sunset towards Denver on I-25, at exit two thirty, the lights of Topgolf become readily apparent. Exit two thirty is exactly two point one miles from the Topgolf complex. One can use a number of adjectives to describe the intensity of the light from this facility, but no one can argue with using, without using the word, with using the word dominant. That is because a Topgolf, an entertainment venue, as they call themselves, radiates two million five hundred and forty-four thousand lumens of light. This number is provided by Keith Ferris of Ferris Engineering, a firm used by Topgolf, and given as part of a testimony in a court action levied by a citizens group in Lewisville, Kentucky. It is our understanding that the orientation of the Topgolf facility has not yet been determined or at least made available to the public. But at two point one miles, it is absolutely true that this dominant glare affects a lot of residents in the arc of these lights. For the proposed location of the venue in Timoth, I live within this arc as will the residents in Timoth Ranch North, five hundred and seven new residences, those in the circle and just north of Bevke Elementary School, four hundred and ninety-plus residences, and those on both sides of Three Bells. Most of us moved to this area for a number of reasons, but one frequently mentioned is the pure enjoyment of seeing a sunset on the Rocky Mountains. Clearly, two million five hundred and forty-four thousand lumens of light pollution will significantly alter that special enjoyment. In the research on Topgolf, there is a reference to the ability to direct and focus LED lights such that the light can be contained within the fence perimeter. In the court case noted previously, counsel for the plaintiff, Stefan T. Porter, cross-examined Mr. Ferris and the other witnesses provided by Topgolf. In this cross-examination, Mr. Porter produced a PowerPoint presentation that included nighttime photographs of Topgolf facilities.
Mr. Armstrong, you have twenty more seconds.
In Huntsville, Alabama, Chester, Missouri, Dallas, Texas, and Orlando. According to Mr. Porter, these photographs prove that light from the proposed development would trespass beyond the fence perimeter and onto neighboring residences.
Mr. Armstrong, could you wrap it up?
Yes, sir. This counsel had my last sentence.
That's great. Thank you.
This counsel has made the public aware of Topgolf's consideration for two other possible areas in Northern Colorado, Johnstown and Lovetown. So in conclusion, this is an appeal to ask this deciding group to ensure that Topgolf builds their facility with this degree of light pollution in a location with fewer residences.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, consent agenda. Any questions or comments? Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. Uh, the consent agenda passes unanimously. Uh, mayor and council reports. I've, I've got an, a addendum to the mayor report from last time where we introduced the new finance committee appointees. And I wanted to make sure, I don't think we mentioned them by name, so it's Caleb Anderson and Chris Seraphin. Both of them are outstanding candidates. They understand finance. They'll be a great addition to the finance committee and, and, uh, I think Lisa and I are both excited to have them, so. Um. Any council reports?
Mayor, we've got two items. Uh, first is tomorrow is Administrative Professionals Day, and I just wanted to recognize all the great folks that, uh, we have working here in the town, um, that keep things going. I know that, uh, I don't see Susan here, but I know she certainly keeps, uh, keeps us all in line and things moving forward. So I just wanted to, to thank everybody that, uh, that has a support role in, in our government. And then the second thing, uh, just an update, uh, on the, uh, town attorney search. We had a number of candidates, uh, apply there. Uh, we, uh, conducted some Zoom interviews, the mayor, myself, uh, and, and Hope, and, uh, are going to ask a number of the candidates, I believe three of them, to come back and meet with both town staff and then also, uh, council members. Uh, so you should see, uh, see that process moving forward, but, uh, we, we did have, uh, I think, three real good, real good candidates for us to give further consideration to.
And I'll reiterate that with, with, it, it was a breadth of fresh airs, uh, who we were talking to and very diverse people. And, uh, Hope's gonna take care of getting that, so each one of you will have the opportunity to talk to the three that are down to, and then we'll have a, um, a exec session to discuss personnel which, uh, on. Thanks, Robert. Uh, finance report, Lisa. Nothing additional. Thank you. Uh, engineering report, Don Toronto. Does anybody have questions? Yep, looks like we do.
I do, Don. I, I noted your, uh, your paragraph talking about the parkway and, uh, some of the developer obligations there and, and, uh, I get the sense that maybe there are some hiccups. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Okay, I don't know that I would characterize it as hiccups as much as it is getting communication kind of engaged again. Uh, they've been focused on their activities and not necessarily the schedule that we had agreed to several months earlier, but we're back engaged with them and I have, I have a positive feeling that we're going to get it right back where, where it needs to be. There are things that they need to do either adjacent to or crossing the parkway, um, that they have to get done. We've sat down with them. They have the schedule. I think it's gonna happen.
Okay, thanks. And I, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but, you know, people often ask where we're at on the parkway and, and, you know, timeframes and things like that. Are you able to speculate on that?
I'll give you my best broken crystal ball thought. We're going to be, uh, advertising that, that part of the, of the parkway, uh, probably early next month. We'll have contractors, uh, hopefully kind of selected, uh, by the end of, of, of the month into June. And hopefully we can have a schedule of starting the construction, uh, later this summer.
Will that construction include developing the entire parkway or just the part to the railroad?
It, it, right, it's going to have all of it, but we can do it in phases intending to do the northern portion first and let the railroad component meet up with it hopefully before finished.
Uh, so give us a timing on that. I think I'll, I'm relaying from, uh, Robert. And I, and I understand who, if, if what you're gonna tell me is, we have no idea what the railroad is gonna do. I get it. You don't need to sit there and project something that isn't, but if you have made progress with the railroad, um, I think this council would like to know.
We have a, a small amount of additional communication from the railroad. We are encouraged that we can get them engaged to have the, uh, the, the crossing approved, uh, but we're not there yet. We were enlisting the help of the PUC to help prod them along.
All right, you're on the, the hot block today. So, uh, how are we, how are we progressing with Walmart? At one point, it looked like you were real encouraged and Luke and, and Robert were encouraged that we were at the goal line, had a cross for sure, but at the goal line, uh, did we get bumped back?
I suspect we, we did get bumped back just a touch only because they have now gone dark on us one more time. So the last time, uh, as you know, they, it was very encouraging. They told us they would schedule the restriping, uh, which they theoretically did, but, but has not happened. So we are pinging them weekly again. And, uh, hopefully by the time we have another, uh, meeting, I'll have better, uh, information for you.
In fact, maybe next time, next meeting, if you could give sort of a chart of how this has progressed, you know, and I, I know that's asking for a tome, but if you could maybe, uh, give us the Cook's version of, here's how we started, here's what we've done here. I know it's extensive and I don't think anybody or very many people understand the amount of hair pulling that has gone on trying to get Walmart to get us a decent pathway there.
We can do that. We, we have that and it is a lengthy diatribe, but, but I'll have it. We'll use digest condensed version next time for you.
And Kim, that's something I'd like to make sure we get on our website. Um. Matt Blakely, Community Development Report.
Nothing to add unless you, uh, have questions.
Okay. Uh, Chief Jones, uh, Monthly Police Report. Okay. Um, Resolution Number Thirty-One, Series Twenty Twenty-Three, a resolution approving engagement with U N B Financial Services for Debt Advisory and Ballot Issue Services. Um, Lisa.
Good evening.
And Lisa, you know, you, what you might do, um, because the report's real good, but a lot of people may not understand what we're, um, exploring initially, so maybe give a background of some minutes for it.
Okay, sure. Um, after the work session that council had on March twenty-eighth regarding broadband as a service for the town, council directed staff to explore the potential of issuing debt to fund that and also potentially, um, doing a sales tax initiative for that. So what this is, is this is an engagement, um, agreement with, um, U M B Bank, Melissa Buck. She's our financial advisor. She advised us, um, last year on the debt refinance. She'll be able to run various scenarios for us and, um, for, um, Finance Committee and Council to consider, um, prior to going to the voters. Um, her fee, if we do not, um, issue debt will be seven thousand five hundred, which we could cover out of our operating budget. But if we do issue debt, her fee is based on the amount of debt issued and that has the potential to go above town manager approval. So that's why this engagement is before you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just reiterate a couple of things that I know the council knows, but just to make sure everybody knows. If, if the council, town council thinks that, um, having, uh, an additional sales tax to do broadband, that will be a vote that the town will make. In addition, if the town council determines that debt financing is the way to go, that will be also a vote that will go to the, uh, town. Um, and really that's the only two sources of funds we'll have, because I understand it's gonna be somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five million dollars to put broadband into, uh, Timoth. And we'll probably run some, uh, agenda or surveys just to get a better feel of where we are before we ever, uh, get even close to that. So, I, I just want to make sure everybody knew that this is something that will be a voteable, uh, type of provision.
Both of those require, um, town vote.
And, and the two bits is the, uh, U N B person is just outstanding. She's the lady that helped us reduce our debt and reduced our debt funding by a million, was it a million five, Lisa?
A million eight.
A million eight, yeah. So, uh, she did an incredibly good job on a very difficult situation, um, a year ago. And, uh, I'm sure she'll do a great job now. Anybody else have, or Lisa? Oh, go.
Um, I just want to make a, a quick comment as well, kind of, uh, emphasizing some of the points the mayor said. The reason we are looking at this for the benefit of the public is, is on two separate occasions, we've had eighty percent of the town vote that they would, would want the town to look at providing municipal broadband, both the general town survey in two thousand twenty-one as well as an election question, a ballot question in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, and so what we're trying to do is explore all the options and see what is the best, most fiscally responsible way, uh, to pay for this project. Uh, and the subject of a bond came up because it's one, it's something the town can vote on, uh, once we actually have a final cost as well as, uh, it allows us to complete the project much faster, uh, than we would otherwise be able to do, which saves the town money with escalating construction costs, saves the town money because we can get ahead of development, which makes it cheaper to install the system. There, and as well as getting revenue for the service to help pay for any bond or debt. So this, that's really what this is, is let's, let's, we want to take a, a good look at how to most effectively give this service to, to people. And the town, as the mayor said, will, will vote on, will vote on this.
Okay, Luke?
I was, for the town staff, I was hoping maybe we could update the ROI payoff calculation with the new bond calculation involved. So we could, next time this is presented, we could look at both options as well.
Yeah, I think, um, when we bring scenarios back, I think we'll have multiple different scenarios to look at. Um, and we can roll the, the cost of financing into the, the total project costs.
Lisa, I was just gonna ask, uh, I know you've got the audit going on. What, what kind of work will this be needed by your team to kind of run through this scenario?
It's really hard to measure. I think the, uh, initial work is upfront before the debt is issued. Having Melissa on board, um, definitely helps with that. And then once the debt is issued and it's not too much of an administrative burden, there's some quarterly compliance reporting typically related to debt, but nothing too too burdensome.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other question, comments? Uh, do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number Thirty-One, Series Twenty Twenty-Three? A resolution approving engagement with U N B Financial Services, Inc. for the Debt Advisory and Ballot Issue Services.
Uh, I move to approve the resolution, approve the engagement with U M B Financial Services, Inc. for Debt Advisory and Ballot Issue Services.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Resolution Number Thirty-One, Series Twenty Twenty-Three? A resolution approving engagement of the U N B Financial Services, Inc. for the Debt Advisory and Ballot Issue Services passed unanimously. Resolution Number Thirty-Two, Series Twenty Thirty-Two, sorry, Twenty Twenty-Three? A resolution approving access construction and public vehicular, uh, crossing agreement with Box Elder Ditch Company and Ladera Business Improvement District. Don?
Yes, sir. Um, I'll be very brief and then answer any questions that you might have. You, you folks are, are familiar with the extension of Weitzel that came from about where the south side of Costco is and wrapped around to County Road Five. With the relocation of the Box Elder Ditch, it crosses that road twice. And this is for a crossing agreement with the Box Elder Ditch Company. And, and that's basically what it is. And, and what we've done is we basically have an agreement with the ditch company that says it's under our road. We have the responsibility for maintenance associated with it in that location. And we've gotten the Ladera Business Improvement District. And we've gotten the Ladera Business Improvement District to accept all responsibility for that. And so we won't have any responsibility unless Ladera doesn't perform. And I think there'll be very, it'll be very seldom that there is a need for this. We we have crossings in other places. The ditch crosses a lot of roads, not in Timneth. And it is very, very seldom that there's a time when it it they need to get in there and do anything but just normal maintenance. So.
Okay. Questions? Okay, good job, Don. Do I have a motion to approve Resolution number thirty-two, series twenty twenty-three? Resolution approving access construction and public vehicular closing crossing agreement with Box Elder Ditch Company and Ladera Business Improvement District.
I move to approve Resolution number thirty-two, series twenty twenty-three? A resolution approving access construction and public vehicular crossing agreement with Box Elder Ditch Company and Ladera Business Improvement District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Resolution number thirty-two, series twenty three, a resolution approving access construction public vehicular crossing agreement with Box Elder Dish Company and Ladera Business Improvement District. Resolution number thirty-three, series twenty twenty-three? A resolution approving a special mail ballot election of the town of Timneth on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. Melissa.
Yes, counsel, as you know, on February first, I received a petition by the people, and I certified it on February eighth. They turn returned it with over a thousand signatures. I I reviewed twenty-six petitions and that contain nine hundred and fourteen signatures and verified that eight hundred and seventy-two were valid, and they only needed six hundred and fifty-one. It is counsel's counsel shall set the ballot language, and I'm asking that the election be set for June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three. The financial impacts are twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, which isn't budgeted for. And it will come from the general fund. And
Carolyn.
Carolyn.
Thank you. So in setting the ballot title, the, as Melissa mentioned, it is an obligation of the Town Council to set the ballot title. The ballot title is the language that's actually going to be put on the ballot and voted on. It is a summary of the full Charter Amendment. The initiative petition contained the actual language of the Charter Amendment, and it's Exhibit A to your resolution, that is, the sections in fifteen point seven. The town is required to publish a notice of the Charter Amendment. So they will be publishing the full text of the Charter Amendment, so everyone can see the full text. But what we're asking you to do tonight is to do two things, to first call, set the date for the election and call the special election. And second, to set the ballot title language. In the packet, there was some proposed ballot title language, but in looking at it further, we have actually we're proposing now a revision to what was in the council packet to simplify the language even further. So your main title in setting, your main purposes in setting the ballot title are to not be confusing and to make it very clear what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, and to be an accurate summary of the Charter Amendment. So what we're proposing is to go straight into prohibiting fences, that that be the first language, so that it would actually read. And I'll actually will hand this out to you guys. But so it would reach, shall the town of Timneth Home Charter be amended to add a new section fifteen point seven prohibiting permanent fences over sixty-five feet? So we go straight into that and make it really clear what a yes and no vote means, that a yes vote is prohibiting fences, and a no vote is allowing fences. And then it would go on to say, you measure vertically from the base of the fence to the top of the fence, including fences composed of netting or screening materials. And we feel like that's an important piece of information to understand that this would apply to something like a driving range where you have poles and netting. And then, which would apply to, and then again, it got, we got some feedback that it was a little confusing with. And so we're simplifying the discussion of the vested property rights to say, which shall apply to currently pending applications with the town for the development of real property that have not yet had a final decision, which prohibition may be enforced by the town government or by citizens and businesses of the town through a private right of action for initiative or equitable relief. So it is the town council's prerogative to approve this final language. And so if you want to discuss any other changes or ask any questions about the change we're proposing here tonight, I'm going to hand this out.
Thanks much, Carolyn. Questions for Carolyn? I think I got a copy, didn't we?
We we added one more. Yeah, we took out the word all in the middle of the paragraph.
Okay. Robert, do you have comment questions?
I do, but I want to make sure that Carolyn's with us.
Okay. And this will be published on the website. Robert.
Carolyn, thank you very much for putting that together. I I certainly agree that, you know, we want government to be accessible, and we want people, when they're casting a vote, really understand, like you said, what what it is that they're voting for. And as a lawyer, I I can say that, you know, sometimes the the legalese does not clarify it. It it clouds the matter. So I I agree with the the red line that that folks have proposed here. I suppose my thought is, given that the the title itself doesn't actually change, you know, what's what's in the resolution, the the full text and and impact, you know, doesn't change based on the title. I I actually wonder if if we couldn't simplify this further, which is just to basically have the language, shall the town of Timneth Home Rule Charter be amended to add a new section fifteen point seven prohibiting permanent fences over sixty-five feet in height, measured vertically from the base of the fence to the top of the fence, including fences comprised of screening materials? And just stop it there. And I I guess I'm wondering if you you have any thoughts. You know, is there any negative impact to simplifying that that much? I I understand that the vested property rights stuff is important. You know, that that's all still in there. We'll we'll publish it. But but for me, I I guess that stuff kind of gets into the weeds and and confuses the matter when when really this is about, you know, prohibiting tall fences and netting or or not. But I I'm just curious if you had thoughts on that.
I think you have a lot of discretion in how you want to phrase it. Like I said, it has to be a turned accurate to summary of of the of the full, and you know, it's it's a page and a half of text. So we're trying to really summarize it down to make it an understandable. So people are really clear what their vote is, and I I could take a lot of comfort in the fact that we're going to be publishing the full text and also be putting, I think. Yeah, and putting the full text on the town's website so that any resident can receive, see the full text and see everything. Ballot initiative cannot take away vested property rights, so that's already kind of implied, but it's also expressly put into that ballot language that it doesn't take away any vested property rights that might be there. And then the private right of enforcement action, you know, that's that's the enforcement mechanism. But, you know, you don't always have that in the ballot title.
Sorry. Thank you. So I guess that that would be my recommendation is to adopt the the red lines. But then also just put a period after materials and not include the last two clauses.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Anybody else?
Brett? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I generally agree with the the red line points, and I think my my concern with with some of the language there is it's somewhat persuasive in nature, and and I would hate to see a situation where a business decided they wanted to sue the town because they thought we were having a biased election with the way we were we were presenting it. And I think for your average resident, I think the the section that Robert mentioned, I think that's that would be appropriate to crop it down to that. I think I think that gets the point across. We're not, we're not changing any legal text, any legal binding powers. I, for one, am eager to hear what the community says, so we can move forward one way or another, and and it's all good with me. But I I think a completely objective and brief ballot question, I think, would be effective in getting the point to the community.
So another option you could do is to say, you know, to stay, stop it there, measure vertically from the base of the fence to the top of the fence, including fences comprised of netting or screening, you could say comma, and setting forth details related there too or something, so that you're pointing your, you know, residents to look back at the full title to see the additional details would be another option.
Anything else, Brett?
No.
Luke, did you have something?
Yeah, first, I want to thank Melissa for her work on getting this all together, so I appreciate it. Thank you. I I'm absolutely in agreement with keeping it simple. I just worry, you know, this is a special election, and I want to keep it as simple as possible. And I agree with the initial red lines. I'm okay with doing more. If that's what council decides, I'm absolutely on board with that. I I think we should try to convey the message of what the purpose is.
I'm okay with, ooh, that's really loud today. I'm okay with shortening it as well. And just in addition to that, I would like to encourage staff to do whatever we can to encourage people to go on and read the full language. I know in the past, we've done mailings, we've done social media so that people know that there's a place where they can go to to read the exact language. And I feel like as if we do a good job doing that, I don't, I I think we could shorten it to make it succinct and and to the point, as long as we're really pushing out the the whole a way for them to read the whole thing, whether it's a mailing that includes that or or something like that.
Carolyn, I thought you did a great job, and and personally, I I wouldn't change what you have here. Because I know you want to try to keep it in the hand view of the initiative language. And so I think you've done a really good job of that. So let's just for a minute stay with the language there. Robert, you suggested shorten it up some more, a couple of sentences and stuff. Is that you too, Brett? And Brett suggests the same. I guess Luke does too.
I'm I'm okay either way.
And I'm fine, since there's three of you, let's shorten it up even more, subject to council. So Carolyn, are you okay with the changes that Robert's suggesting?
I am.
Okay, great. So I don't know, as we need any further discussion on approving the ballot language. So I'm going to ask for a Resolution number thirty-three, three, series twenty twenty-three? A resolution approving a special mail ballot election of the town of Timneth on June twenty seventh, two thousand and two, with adjustments as made in the Town Council meeting.
And and Mayor, I I would move to adopt Resolution thirty-three, series twenty twenty-three? A resolution approving a special mail ballot election of the town of Timneth on June twenty seventh as proposed with one amendment, which is to adopt the ballot title as follows. Town of Timneth Ballot Question, amending the Town of Timneth Home Rule Charter to prohibit permanent fences over sixty-five feet in height. Shall the town of Timneth Home Rule Charter be amended to add a new section fifteen point seven? Prohibited prohibiting permanent fences over sixty-five feet in height, measured vertically from the base of the fence to the top of the fence, including fences comprised of netting or screening materials, period? With the rest of what had been there omitted.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Which is Resolution number thirty-three, series twenty twenty-three? A resolution approving a special mail ballot election of the town of Timneth on June twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, as amended. Next, I'd like to, I close this meeting, right, Melissa? No, I don't. I just go into executive session.
We'll need a motion to go into executive session.
Okay, so we've got a we need some legal advice on a complaint filed by a person in town. And we obviously need to do that in a private matter. So we are going to go into executive session. Do we stay here? Are we going to go into the, stay here? Okay, so I think everybody needs to go ahead and take off. There's some chairs there and stuff.
They can be here for the motion, if you want to go ahead, and if anyone wants to make that motion right now.
I'll move to go to executive session.
Pursuant, and actually, you need to read the whole thing.
Pursuant to section twenty-four, six, four oh two, four B, for purposes of conferences with an attorney for the local public body for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions related to complaint by Robert Flockhart, et cetera, against the town of Timneth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in executive session.
We could open the doors and let the public back in, but it doesn't look like there's a lot of people. So you can just have a motion to dismiss.
Okay.
To adjourn.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
So pardon?
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 We are adjourned.